Ed, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me, Rich?
Yes, we can hear you, Ed. Yeah, so go ahead and we're gonna, one second, we're going to... Is it not already started? Oh, don't do that, don't do that. Just cancel it. And then go to, uh, go to, go back. Uh, where is it? Uh, down there, yeah, pull that up, there you go. And then, open that up, full screen. Down at the bottom, where it says more. Oh, YouTube's already on, it says. Oh, you just wanna hit record then? Just go over two buttons, three buttons over and just hit record. See it there? One, two, three, record. Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you.
On order, the August 8th, uh, 2022 Township Supportive Supervisors Meeting. Mr. Neese, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Alteri. Here, Ms. Roberts-Laycap.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Chanlis. Not your Solicitor Engineer and Manager here. Mr. Sikora, would you just make note about the, uh, quorum, please?
Right, so, uh, we have a five-person board, three constituents quorum. You need, and if, so three present to conduct business, present for the second-class township is sufficient if all members present can hear and be heard and participate in the meeting. So just because you're not physically present, doesn't mean you're not present. So as long as we have Mr. Partridge here, who can hear and be heard, we have a quorum of three. I will note that, uh, to conduct business, you need an affirmative vote of the majority of the board. So anything that you want to pass tonight would have to be unanimous amongst the three. The three-member quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Sikora. Um, can we please have a moment of silence? And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written, please? Oh, with one change, correct?
Yes, we'd like to make one amendment, please, under payments. Uh, will be 12.5. It will be...
12.6.
I'm sorry, 12.6, I'm sorry, uh, will be 12.6. It will, uh, it would be an amendment to pay Lori DeFabio $8,250 for past court reporting, uh, services.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition, please?
Make a motion, we approve the change.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, a public comment for agenda items only?
Cindy Mahalo, 87 Hunters Run, Vice Chair, Environmental Advisory Council. My first question has to do with Agenda Item 9.7, the report from the Township Engineer. And I notice, uh, in the sixth bullet, it talks about the Sawmill and Aspen Road properties. And, uh, the fact that you, um, met with the Parks and Rec to solicit ideas and feedback for the park design. And I was wondering if the EAC and the Trails and Greenways, uh, organizations would also be able to provide comment? As there might be relevant implications that they could comment on, such as? EAC could comment on, uh, stormwater management and Trails and Greenways could comment on, um, that property in terms of how it relates to the overall, uh, Trails Plan. This, the Township Trails Plan, um, I was part of the task force that put together that plan. And I know that the task force specifically discussed that property and that it's very strategic in terms of having, um, access from the west side to the east side of township. And could be a gateway down Sawmill, um, to Radnor. So I was just wondering about, about the process and EAC and Trails and Greenways.
Mr. Neese, do you wanna?
I, I would make note that obviously, you know, we have had that conversation with the engineer and saying that, you know, that's a vital part of what we're doing. In fact, part of the whole plan going down Sawmill is to, in the widening that's gonna take place there is to make sure there's room to put a trail in to head down that way. Um, uh, in addition, uh, there is a very, a significant portion of the Aspen property that is a stormwater basin. And that's being taken into account as well. I, I would think for the purposes of right now, what they're looking for is like how we wanna use that area. Then we will come back and start doing designs and then there would be appropriate at that time to comment on. Could we change something and how we're looking at stormwater or even looking at, for example, the, you know, if the trails? It, it's kind of concept, high-level concept right now of saying, here's the things we want in it. It's not necessarily the detailed design of what's there, if that makes sense.
No, I understand that. I just think that it could be more, more efficient and save engineering design dollars if those ideas are considered at the conceptual phase. And I was at the Parks and Rec meeting and, and those things were touched on a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that they got full consideration at the concept stage.
Any ideas that the EAC has would be, we, we would take for sure.
Well, Mr. Neese, it's more though, we need a place to start.
Yeah.
That kind of like our, our starting point and, um, and, you know, I know that, uh, the staff and I know this board and George, um, wanna work with, you know, we try to bring everyone together. So we would never, uh, keep anyone out of this conversation, but I think it was a play, we need to start someplace and, and, and then we can, we can have the overall conversation. Once the engineers, uh, get their foothold on that property, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't wait till it was too late.
Oh, that it was built and the ribbon cutting and?
Not at that point.
Yeah.
Um, my second question has to do with Agenda Item 14.3. And that is the proposal from StanTech about the Greer Park Phase 1 Master Plan Project and Stream Restoration as part of the Township's PRP. Um, I was just wondering, could, uh, Giovanna give a brief description of what the stream restoration is? What that will consist of?
Um, you can do it now, I guess, if that's okay.
You know, um, this is, uh, item 14.3 we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, I think, um, th- this is a, uh, agenda item that, um, I would consider to, uh, to table, uh, till we get the, the full board. So I don't know if we wanna spend any time on it now. I don't know if anybody, uh, would wanna second my motion to table this item, um, and, and bring it back with the full board.
Yeah, I, I think it's important, it's a lot of money we're gonna spend. And since there's two individuals on the board that aren't here tonight, I think we'd like to wait for them if that's okay and table it the next week.
Okay, I, I just remember when the MS4, uh, plan was first presented several years ago. Uh, the EAC inquired as to the nature of the stream restoration and there were no details available at that time. But now that three years have passed, I'm, I'm hoping that there's more details of whether that will be, for example, riparian buffer enhancement, if there'll be any upland restoration, if it'll just be riprap and gambians, things like that.
Yeah, we can cover that when we get the full board.
Well, I, I think that it, it's, it's part of the plan, right, Stephen? It's part of the park plan already, the, the storm or the, I'm sorry, the stream, uh, the, um, the restoration?
I think that, I think the, what, what Cindy's asking about, yes, the stream restoration is part of the park plan.
Right.
In, in Greer Park and going back, that takes the pond, reduces the size of the pond, takes the stream out from, we're going through the pond, separate and apart. I think what Cindy's asking for i- in specific is what are the details of how we're doing that? What is the, what does the banks look like or is it, am I, am I correct?
Well, yeah, I know, I understand about the pond area, but then if you look at the MS4, um, maps.
Yep.
There is a length of, of linear feet of the stream that is going to be restored.
And what I think she's asking is the detail of how it's gonna be restored. And there's, there's multiple ways to do it and I think that's what she's getting at.
Yeah, but with all due respect, we, we did table this item.
Right, you're right, Ed, you're correct, yeah, until we get the, until we approve the proposal.
I, I know, actually you took a vote, uh, do you need to take a vote?
We had two.
Yeah, three, you have three.
Okay, that's good, so I just wanna make sure.
It's a lot of money to spend and I think.
Yep.
We might as well go through the whole proposal when everybody's here together, as opposed to doing it now and then come back two weeks and do one again.
Yeah, now that makes sense. Is it possible that that proposal i- is shared with the EAC in advance so we can also review it?
I think, I think we could do that.
Okay.
Okay, great, and the, my last question is about 14.4. Um, where there's $362,000, um, a bid being awarded for Echo Valley culvert improvement. And I was just wondering about any relationship between that culvert improvement, which to me sounds like sewer system, stormwater, and helping achieve MS4 requirements.
So that is merely a rehabilitation of the existing head walls that's there. We're not ma- making any adjustments to the stream banks or anything like that. The head walls and end walls that are there is disrepair, so it's just a repair for the storm head walls and end walls. So there, there will be no possibility for credit for the PRP for that.
And it's the head walls of?
The streams that run underneath Echo Valley. They're old stone masonry head walls that are cracking and collapsing and some of them are undermined. Um, so we're gonna go in, pour some new footers and reconfigure the walls to, to make it a little more structurally sound.
They're, they're culverts that run under the road.
They carry the streams rather than the road.
Got it, okay, great, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Being done, uh, let's move down to minutes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is presentations, uh, traffic calming and placemaking update, Mr. Neese.
Yes, um, so I believe you're aware that, uh, we've been working with DVR PC and Gather in the Circle, uh, looking at possible traffic calming improvements, uh, in the circle and also kind of coming out on the, um, uh, like, the theater roads that go into the circle. Uh, the two specifically that we've been talking about this year, well, we, if you recall, George's team came back and looked at coming off of Westchester Pike or going to Westchester Pike from the circle. And they did the painting of the kind of a island area. And, uh, we've kind of walked through that whole process where we put it out and then we painted it and then they painted in a black sidewalk on it just to give an idea of what it could look like. Uh, and, and if you recall, we talked about, I think, three, two meetings ago, three meetings ago, that, you know, future recommendation would probably be to consider taking out some of that asphalt and actually putting in a curb and actually having a nice, uh, you know, center island there so that we would have a safe way for people to cross. Uh, which is a very wide area, I think George and I were out there, I wanna say it's close to something like almost 70 feet, you know, in a cross, uh, in that spot. And then we, and then we had a, you, you know, last year we did a test at, at the circle and it was met with mixed reviews, a lot of people weren't as happy with some of that. But George's team took some of those ideas and redid some crosswalks, uh, that were very successful. And then they also looked at a couple islands as well, coming off, particularly coming north on St. Albans, uh, and go, I say going north, it was actually south on St. Albans, I'm sorry. Uh, coming up the hill, uh, from Winding Way and also coming in from Rhodes Avenue. Uh, I believe, last meeting, George approached you about, uh, the fact that we wanted to do traffic calming along Rhodes Avenue. And we were putting in some temporary speed tables, which I believe will be being put in, in the next week or two, um, i- in the conversation that George and I've had. The second piece of this was to, or third piece of it, uh, was to look, um, kind of at the corner of, uh, Woodcrest Avenue and, um, the, uh, Woodcrest Avenue in St. Albans, which is like about halfway up, a little bit closer to the top. As you're coming up St. Albans Avenue from, uh, Winding Way or as you're going down, and it would be on the side as you're going down, uh, where the Woodcrest comes in. Uh, DVR PC, as we, we've been working with them with some of the traffic calming thoughts, uh, came up with this idea that we would move the curb out. I don't know if you can move forward in the presentation. To, uh, go down one more, I've jumped through a lot of this, this, all the traffic data. Uh, I jumped down right here, if you'll stop there, whoops, back up please, just right there. Uh, so looking at, um, looking at Woodcrest, uh, we've talked about the importance of going ahead and putting in a, a crosswalk as you come down the sidewalk going between the two. Uh, particularly as we're encouraging walking, um, potentially even from Greer Park up the hill into, you know, that area. But then we looked at, and, and George's team, along with the police, had looked at and had actually Xed out. Um, if you look like where the cars parked on Woodcrest, kind of in the area where you see the little, uh, box coming off that I think that says area, what size it is. Um, a- anyway, they're, they've already painted a cross off in that spot. Uh, and then they did the same thing on the other side, uh, coming down St. Albans, uh, where you kind of see the red. And so, um, tho- both of those areas we looked at and we said, if we did that, it would help narrow, uh, uh, both St. Albans Avenue as well as narrow, um, Woodcrest. Hopefully with the purpose of trying to do some traffic calming in the, in those ways. Um, so DVR PC went back and working with Gather in the Circle and they came up with a design of, uh, something that could be painted in that area that's red. If, that you see up on your screen. And if you go up to the next screen. Um, I believe this is the design, uh, that the artist came up with, uh, that would be painted in the, that area. It would be a, a kind of a repetitive, as I understand it. Uh, but you would have, like, uh, the, um, I believe it's the square tavern and the school, uh, as kind of our history. And then, and then this would be done in some, I'm, I'm saying more, uh, it's not quite pastel colors, but it's softer colors than, than some things that you see on the, on the roadway there for artwork in that spot. So that's, that's the idea that they came up with is what they were looking for. Uh, i- if we went ahead and painted these areas, what we might paint them, um, in that way. So, like I said, we've already done cross marks, uh, out on the street to kind of say where we don't want cars to park because of this, where the red is already.
Where the red is, George has already marked that off with, um, with regular traffic markings.
Yeah, with, with big X's, white X's.
Okay.
Kind of thing, is that correct, George? It's like X's, I believe?
Yes, some of them we do have X's on, some of the other ones, there's just signage there that says no parking from here to corner. So that, those areas, there's, there's basically no parking in right now.
Now, the residential ones that are on the other side of Woodcrest, do they have parking? Those duplexes, the ones at the top of the screen there?
If we're going down the hill.
Yes.
Uh, their parking is out on the street.
So they, they park on the street?
That's my understanding of it.
On the street, okay.
Yeah, there may be a very small parking lot, uh, behind them, but it's not much parking, most of them park on the street. But right now, none of the parking that they would currently use is taken away. Uh, the, these are areas that were actually already, uh, not parking permitted.
Thank you, George.
So that's kind of where we are, I have it on the agenda later for us to look at actually some of the street art that was done in, um, media. George was down there, uh, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, uh, fulfilling his civic duty, um, it got... Got to do some jury, jury duty for us and so, uh, while he was there, he went, if you don't know, uh, Leonard had talked about it and there was, uh, there's a intersection by the Township Building down there. It's a little bit more of a commercial district than a residential district, but, uh, they went and they did a, they, they did a, a similar idea, but they took the whole center of the, um, intersection and painted it. And so I have some pictures to show you as we get down there to talk about that, uh, as what we were doing, uh, or what a possibility is. And then, uh, there's also a, a couple other pictures of what they've done in a similar situation, uh, where we're looking at where the red is. I can show you what they've done in that area so that you can help do that. I believe it's 12 points, no, I'm sorry, it's 14.9.
Are you looking for us to make a decision tonight or is this a, um, a conver- just a, a presentation?
Well, right now, it, it, this is the presentation, I'm gonna go down to the next spot, it might be a time where you would make a decision or you might say, well, one, if you don't have two of your people here, you may say you don't wanna, you just wanna table it. Or you may say, we're not interested in doing it at all, you may say you're not interested in doing the artwork, whatever. You might give us some feedback so we know the next steps to work with, uh, with the, with DVR PC and with, uh, with, uh, Gather in the Circle at this point.
Mike and I, do you wanna talk about this now or do you wanna wait till it's later on the agenda? Do you have a preference?
Well, I, I just think it's too premature because we're not done with the traffic coming to see exactly how we're gonna do it. I mean, we haven't come up with all the final solutions to that. So what happens if one of these areas, the person spends all this, the team spends all the time doing these paintings, we have to do different markings or something or we, we're gonna make the road narrow or something? We haven't determined exactly what we're doing yet.
Cause there's impact.
Yeah.
Right, when you make a change, it, it, it's kind of like a waterfall almost, right? You make a change here, you don't know how it's gonna affect a change there. Um, and so, I mean, there's just the three of us tonight, but I think that, um, and, and Ed, do you have a, um, do you have a, an opinion on that right now? Or would you rather us table this again or maybe just, I, I think that I, I mean, we tried, unfortunately, we had the, um, technical difficulties, uh, last meeting.
Yeah.
This was on the agenda and I, you know, I, I'm in agreement with Mike, it's, and I think that the rest of the board may also consider that this is premature. Uh, we don't wanna rush into anything until we, um, until George and his team has had a chance to do the, you know, the speed humps and the other painting, uh, that, uh, that is planned for the, um, for that area.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that, Tina, and, you know, we just take this as an update, uh, thanks for the update, Steve, and, um, yeah, um, continue to, to develop the necessary, uh...
And then as George and the, and the, and Public Works and Chief, uh, Chief Lon look at the rest of that area to give us, you know, an update and then maybe a decision once we make these other next steps.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then you have another, um, item, uh, Mr. Laffiata? Leave that out.
I was hoping.
I'm actually, I'm actually gonna start us off. Um, so we're actually covering two areas of the budget tonight. Um, so, um, that, just so you know, I've asked Rich to focus mostly on those areas that are changes. Um, and not the $500 changes that a particular line item may be, we're glad to go through and give you all of that detail and talk about all that. What we're really gonna look at is the main changes that we see happening in both capital and operating, uh, for 2023.
Uh, yeah, I guess, we start with the operating. So as Steve spoke about, we're gonna try to get through this relatively quickly just because we have a, a, a large number of slides, I'm trying to be mindful of everybody's time. A quick recap, our categories for our operating budget are personnel, administrative, operating, contractual services, facilities and debt. Um, this does not include our capital purchases or our salaries and benefits, but it is everything else other than those still. So moving along, um, I just wanted to highlight some increases that you're gonna see across all different departments. First would be gasoline, diesel, um, some vehicle repairs, insurance costs, as well as materials and supplies. These increases here account for about 38% of everything that you're go, all the increases, um, that you're gonna see throughout the whole presentation.
And Rich, that's not because of any increase in usage, correct? It's just inflation and the cost of gasoline.
That is correct.
And materials.
There, there might be, uh, minor modifications, but mostly it's because of inflation.
Thank you.
So, uh, our first department would be legislative, the major highlight you're gonna see here is a $20,000 increase for a grant writing service, a third-party grant writer instead of hiring one in-house. Moving on to administration, uh, you'll really see no major changes in this department. Moving on to finance, you'll also see no major changes in this department. Tax collection, like the first two, you will see no major changes in this department. Legal services, uh, also the same budget as, uh, same proposed budget as 2022. Our first change that you're going to see is in operating expenses, uh, we are proposing a $5,400 increase for machinery and equipment. This is just for the increased price of computers and IT equipment. Facilities, you're gonna have two major changes, the first is gonna be a $4,000 increase for building maintenance, cause the building is getting older since we've done the resident renovation, as well as a $3,000 increase for utilities. This, um, also is, um, expected for inflation reasons. Police, you're gonna see three major, um, proposed modifications, the first is a $14,000 budget increase for the two new hires that we talked about. I assume it'd be the three new hires, the two replacement for the retire as well as the new officer. Um, a $17,300 increase for vehicle gasoline as we've talked about, as well as an $8300 increase in... A $17,300 increase for vehicle gasoline as we've talked about, as well as an eighty three hundred dollar increase in contractual services for the license plate readers that. We will talk about in the capital presentation next. You will see a $7,500 increase for gasoline and diesel in the fire department budget as well as a $5,000 increase for vehicle repairs. Ambulances are also going to see a $5,000 increase for gasoline as well as a $2,000 increase. For building maintenance, just like their, just like our facilities, our facilities are in need of some repair. The next increase you're going to see is in contractual services in the codes department. We're increasing. We're anticipating about a $10,000 increase for third party inspections. Planning, you will see a $10,000 increasing contractual services for engineering costs. There are no significant changes in emergency management. That's. Highlight from last year's budget, the recycling contract. This is a contractual increase of $20,706 for recycling. Public Works, the two main increases here are going to be 20,450 for gasoline as well as $6,300 for vehicle repairs. Street sweeping, you will also see a $2,000 increase for vehicle repairs since the street sweeper is now a couple of years old. We're going to need some parts and maintenance on it. Snow removal, a proposed increase of $7,000 for salt and chemicals. This is also to reflect inflation. Our operating costs in traffic. Controls, a $5,200 increase for sign assigned materials. Again, materials are just costing more, so we need to reflect it. No major changes in the street lighting department. Roads and bridge maintenance, a $4,000 increase for asphalt, again inflation. You will see no major increase in the tree department. Tree care department. No major increase in the storm water department. Park, the joint leisure services has not asked for any increase for 2023, so you'll see no major changes in this department. The historical society has also not asked for an increase, so you'll see no change in this department. Parks, you'll see a $5,000 increase for various park improvements. The library has asked for a $7,000 contributions to help some of their staff with raises. EAC. No significant changes. Our debt is, we don't plan on taking any debt out in 2023 that I'm aware of at the moment, so there is no increases. Last but not least, insurance costs. We're anticipating about a $15,500 increase and this is. I believe it's about a five percent increase. We're just using that as a budget number. We get those numbers a little bit later in the year. So overall, your proposed 2023 operating expenses have increased about $219,000 from 2022. As I said before, about eighty, eighty two thousand dollars of that was covered in the first slide, just in vehicle gasoline. Maintenance costs, insurances, things along those lines. So I know we went through that extremely quickly. So if anybody has any questions about any of the departments, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I would just note, if you looked at that. I would, I think we're looking at about eighty percent of those costs are really related to. Just the cost of inflation and those kind of things. Couple minor increases that we looked at in a couple places where we said, we just need to spend some more dollars going forward. But if you looked at it from an operational side, we have not added anything operationally to do this. This is. This is just maintaining pretty much what we're doing today, except probably for the license plate reader that we're going to talk about in a minute.
Any board members have any questions for Rich?
No, I think this all, all makes sense. And obviously, as we move through the budget process and we look at the other end of it where. We see how much we have available. I guess we'll work through and, and see what we can do, but I think what was presented seems to be. Reasonable.
Sounds within lines of what we see as far as. The percentage of how much inflation has gone up. Can we take public comment or public questions?
I would, if, if we could, I'd recommend that George or that Rich do the. Capital and then maybe take public comment on both if you wish to. Where this isn't really a, we're going to do more of the depth. With you in September and October where we'll be taking full public comment for the whole board, but they're welcome to comment if they wish to.
All right, Rich, go ahead and do your capital budget.
Sure. So as I just spoke about, that was the operating budget. Now we're going to move on to the capital budget. Our definition of capital is something over. $5,000 with the lifespan of more than one year. Just for your reference, I put our 2021 capital purchases up there. And I have also included our 2022 capital budget, which is approximately $4.4 million. Just another refresher, we work off our rating system, starting with A, which is a safety issue, ending with D, which is suggestion, but we're not ready to implement, but we want to put it on the supervisor's radar that we will be suggesting it in years to come. So moving along into the admin department, our first item is the administration vehicle. The current admin vehicle is reaching the end of its life and we would recommend replacing it at a cost of $45,000. The next item we have is a D rating. This is a document scanning in an effort to make the township paperless. This would be the second year of the program. Currently, we have year one in 2022 budget, but we want to roll the program out to 2023 as well. And then again, just for everybody's reference, we like to break things down into the first time budgeted items versus our replacement items. So our total admin cost is $107,000 for all replacement items. We're not really adding any new capital items, just replacing the items. Document scanning is we would actually had a third party scanning company come in. And the, this quote here is to do for all the property files, have all the property files electronic. Quote for 2022 was to have the whole public works garage come in scanned and file electronic.
So when we get up to speed and we have everything scanned, how do we maintain scanning from there on? Do we buy a scanner?
We have scanners already in-house that we use.
This would be more of the, the catch up.
This is kind of catching up.
To standard.
Yep.
Everything scanned and now from now on we can maintain it ourselves.
That's the goal. Yeah.
So moving on to codes, just like the admin vehicle, the codes vehicle is being recommended for replacement by the mechanic. So we would also recommend replacing the codes vehicle at a cost of $45,000. This is the only item in the codes replacement, or I'm sorry, in the codes department. It's a replacement cost of about $45,000. Moving on to our police department, we have two new vehicles as well as body cameras. The two new police vehicles have been in the budget, I believe, since 2017. We have been honest that we are on a very good cycle of replacing two police vehicles a year. Then we take those vehicles and recycle them throughout the other departments. This is just continuing on the program. We increased each car about $3,000 just to reflect inflation, but other than that, it's the same, same program as we've gone. The next is body cameras. The body cameras have a capital cost of $45,000, $45,800 for a one-time capital purchase, but it also comes. With a $5,500 operating expense for data storage. That is, that, that's, I guess, where they get you, is you need to store the data. So we need to have space to store it.
Is, um, do we, do our police have body cameras now?
Currently, they do not.
They do not. This, this is a program that Chris is looking into. He's not, it's not a high recommendation for next year. If, if we had funding available, we would probably do it. They're still working on writing the policies and such related to it before they would implement it.
Is there, would there be grant opportunities that we?
I, I think we could get grant opportunities for the cameras themselves. The, the real cost ends up really being. The repetitive cost of storing the images that are collected. And that's the, that's the bigger piece.
So we'll give you the razor, save by the razor blade.
Yep, exactly. Very, that's a perfect.
I was just, that's a great analogy.
It is a greater analogy. Okay, we'll get another one coming up.
Yeah.
I do, I do think there's limits on the requirements to save the video past like ninety days.
Yeah.
I do believe there's limits on the requirement to save the video past ninety days. I think it's called. There's an act that covers Act twenty-two or something, so there's probably some limits to that expense.
Do we also, would that also, would there be any cost savings in, for insurance? If we had body cameras or anything like that? Not that we have any kind of. You know, issues with our police, but I didn't know if that's also something to, to consider.
Yeah, I, I would assume there's probably potentially some savings in our police liability. You know, one could argue that it's actually, you know, what do you, what do you tend to see when you see the body camera is? We tend to see what really happened and it's not always good. Is what we see on the news, but the truth of the matter is, you know, I would say ninety-eight percent of the time, they've actually done the right thing. And so I do think there's some benefit. And so. We, I would think that there would be a benefit to our department. We have very strong policies that we follow. And, you know, because of their accreditation. But Chris is really working through that, what that looks like with the accreditation process to make sure that as we move forward, we remain accredited. As, as we look at moving forward. And that's the reason why it's out there for you to think about, but not necessarily.
Maybe the accreditations that we have, they eventually, we may have to do that in order for them to sustain.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
So those are two, I guess are, yeah, our two items for the, the police department. So moving on to public works, there's a host of items that I'm going to talk about. So I'm just going to skip right over this slide. The first item is going to be crosswalks at campus, Goshen and Bishop Palo at a cost of $16,000 each. These are the. Nice crosswalks, the big flashing lights that everybody likes to see. Next item would be our permanent speed humps at the cost of $120,000. This is up to nine. These would go in after we put the temporary down. We make sure we achieve the result that we want from the temporary. We'd come back and support it, like put the permanent speed humps in there. The next is the Valley Ford Road Bridge. The bridge is deteriorating. Recently had some emergency repairs due to, I believe it was a flood or a water main break. The cost would be about $900,000 and we're actively looking at different grants and things that we can get to help offset that cost, but. People leave the cost of you about $900,000. The next would be the construction of the traffic island at St. Albans Circle. This will help combat speeding while. Helping us with walkability in the circle. That costs $26,000. This was actually in the budget, I believe it was two years ago, but we canceled this project due to COVID and lack of materials, but we would still like to. Refer versus the library patio, get some more use for the library. Our next would be our street light LED replacement program. This is the first year that we're proposing this. Back in 2017, we did it through an energy, a guaranteed energy savings grant. We went through, we changed all the street lights in the township to LED lights. They obviously have a lifespan, just like everything else, so we believe that we should start putting $20,000 away. So when it does come time to replace all the LED lights, we have the money set aside. Just like the LED replacement program, the public works replaced a program we started, I believe, this will be our third year. We try to add an additional $25,000 a year. We had the twenty-five, bring us up to 75,000 for 2023 with the overall goal and between 250 and 275,000. And. Last but not least, the infamous road program. We've started this, I think in 2016. We've been adding $50,000 with the overall goal to end between 400 and 450,000. So this. Probably be one more year of adding 50,000, what we're recommending, bringing it from 350 to 400,000. And one thing that came out of our public budget workshop was there was some interest in some additional leaf collection costs. Go around the township one additional time. We are going to need some additional trucks, additional trailer. As well as some operating costs. So the capital to get this program up and running for the first year would be a $460,000 for the equipment. After that, you would have an operating cost of about an additional $35,000 in fuel and additional labor. So as you can see on this slide, we're looking at about $2.1 million in capital, public works capital. As well as additional $35,000 that we would have to add into our general fund operating budget if the board chose to go the route of additional leaf collection. Next, you will see our parks. And the first item up is our Drexel Lodge sewer hookup. Once public sewer is ready in that area, Drexel Lodge will be required to hook up the sewer. So we are. Proposing putting $30,000 into the capital fund budget to hook up the sewer and the sewer is ready. The next is the Drexel Lodge Park Grant Match. It's about $115,000, but we applied for a grant for a hundred. We would get some protected pedestrian bridge, re-roofing and replacing it. And I believe we should hear back from that grant. Shortly. Next is the key and camera system at the park. This is to be determined. We would have to bring internet to the parks. And then from there, we would install automatic keys and cameras that we can control from the building. This would say the public worst guys as well as the police from going out to the parks on a daily basis to open up, lock up, make sure everything's safe. Monitor it all from the township building. If you recall, replacement of turf was in the 2022 budget, but. The organizations out there did some. Modifications this year and we didn't think it was wise to go and rip the turf up after they just went and replaced it. So we are going to. Try to include it in the 2023 budget at a cost of 475,000. Next is our playground equipment replacement program. This will be the first year that we are. Proposing this, just like everything else in the township, playground equipment has a useful life. We would like to start putting $25,000 away every year. So when the playground equipment needs to be replaced, we have the, the dollars in hand already. So as you can see, the first time budget items are $55,000 plus because we don't have an exact dollar figure for the key and camera system quite yet. We'll get that number to you later. And about 590,000 in replacement items, bringing the parks capital budget to. $645,000 plus once we get the. Key and camera system. Last but not least, just like we've been saying all along, the fire equipment, we now in a fire truck. We are aware that another fire truck needs to be replaced in the next coming years. We would propose that we start doing very much like we do with the roads, putting $25,000 a year away until we'd reach a number that we can replace the fire. Department equipment that the township owns. When it's needed. So all said and done, you're looking at about $815,000 plus for first time budgeted items. And then about 2.3 million in total replacement dollars, bringing your total. To about $3.1 million in capital with an additional $41,000 in operating costs. I know that was a ton.
Where, where? Where are we with? Our, our good neighbors that we've been helping out with the fire service and whatnot and talking to them about giving us some more money towards. Our, our helping of them. We talked about this last year and all these costs are going through the roof. Our equipment's going through the roof. And these are very wealthy communities that don't want to provide their own services, their own constituents. So I want to know what they're going to do to help us with these numbers. I think that's something that, and if it's nothing, then we need to reinvest, reassess what we do to help them.
Absolutely. I will.
Because then they can go and they can hire a full-time fire service. And I think the residents would be a lot more inclined to donate some money towards Newtown Square's services.
Abs- absolutely.
The other thing is the same thing with the library. Everybody uses our library and they give us some pennies. So we need $50,000 with the furniture to see what they're willing to donate towards that program. I mean, this is getting to be ridiculous. I, I got to be honest with you. I don't, everybody's paying more for everything and these towns are being, these, these neighboring communities are being helped by us because they don't have their own in-house services. So they need to step up to the plate and let us know what they're going to do to help us. Everybody in Newtown Square shouldn't pay the burden if, if. Everybody in Newtown Square shouldn't pay the burden if, if, if we're taking them and covering them for services with our new, what is a million and a half dollar fire truck and, and, and our guys. You know, it's, it's, and our fuel, the fuel costs. I mean, everybody's feeling the, feeling the hitch and both of these towns are very wealthy. So they don't want to provide services for their constituents. They're asking us to help them. Well, then they got something to play with more, more resources to give to us. Or else we have to have a come to Jesus meeting with them and say, hey, listen, what are you going to do here? And then maybe they have to go out and hire a full-time fire service like other communities that can't staff volunteers. I, I really don't feel that everybody in town should support these other communities without their participation at, at, at a similar rate that we're participating.
So Rich, so we have the roads program. We have the fire equipment program, or that's a new one. What do we have in place currently as far as savings, these, these future?
So right now we have the road program that's at three hundred and fifty thousand. We have the public works replacement program that's at fifty thousand.
And the public works is for vehicles that were equipment.
We have, um, the street signs that we actually just finished up this year. Battery replacements that we just finished up this year. I feel like I'm missing one. Police, police vehicles.
Yep. Road program and the police and the, um, and the road program. That's what I remember.
Yes. Now, those, those are the three that are currently, and then we're looking at adding three additional ones.
And that's what's, that's been, by having these savings has been helpful to get the road program, um, up and organized and, and planned. So we're, we're looking in the future.
The ultimate goal, we know that it, for, for the road program, we know we need roughly about eight hundred thousand dollars a year to do roads. And so we get four hundred from liquid fuels. We would get four hundred from us. Give or take is, as the liquid fuels taxes go one way or the other. And so I think that's the reason why we're saying we may have to go to four fifty at some point. The, we know that right now we need about two hundred and fifty on vehicles for the public works building where our public works equipment for the police, we're already kind of where we need to be if we keep that in the budget every year. And then these others, you know, that we've talked about this year are starting to put us into place so that when we get to the time of replacing park equipment or
lighting.
Lighting or, uh, fire trucks, we have those dollars available. Just to give you an idea, the lighting, I think when we did it last time was about a hundred and eighty thousand roughly, you know. So, you know, if we do twenty thousand for nine years, you know, adding it each year, then we'll be where we are, which interestingly enough will put us right about the time, uh, that we have to replace those lights because they've got about a fifteen year light cycle, life cycle.
And twenty thousand's manageable to, to, to put to the side as opposed to a hun- a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Rich?
No.
I think Mr. Rosenthal, you had, and then Cindy.
Louis Rosenthal, twenty Harrison. Um, I'm gonna, I've spent some time on the phone with Rich this afternoon. So he clarified a number of things for me and I thank him greatly. First comment I would just, uh, sort of share is I think it's great that these capital, um, budget items are aligned to the strategic plan that was adopted. It makes a lot of sense and I think that that has to continue through. I would, there was a little bit of mention of, of some of the items, um, reconcile everything that was gathered in the budget workshop process, whether it actually makes it on paper and what decisions, uh, the supervisors ultimately make and, and make that a part of the budget package, um, uh, for this year, just a suggestion. And, um, the only sort of detail I would, uh, sort of get into and it's more a comment. Um, I just went through a bulk purchase with an organization on fuel. We wound up getting twelve percent lower than we thought we'd get a month ago. If you come up with lower numbers, don't change the budget, keep the numbers high so that we have cushion, um, in, in the, in, in the event that it changes, um, over time. But that's it. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rich. That is really clear, very easy to follow. Several quick questions. Did I miss, um, something, uh, for the arborist? I know we now have a part-time arborist.
Arborist is budgeted in the tree, the daycare department.
Oh, okay.
It's remaining the same.
Okay. And how much does the arborist earn in a year? Or is the tree budget?
I don't, well, the tree budget's bigger than just the arborist piece. So I, I, we'd have to go back and pull that out. I don't think we have that.
About twenty thousand.
Okay. Yeah, I'm more wondering, just like, is he part-time, quarter-time, like?
It's, it's, it's an as needed. And so it's a third-party contract similar to our engineer. As we need them, we bring them in to do what we need them to do. I, I wouldn't say it's so many hours here, so many hours there.
Okay. Um, and then I saw that you have two new vehicles slated, a codes vehicle and a manager, township manager vehicle. And it did not specify the type of vehicle. And I wondered if you're looking at electric vehicles.
We're looking at the possibility of electric vehicles for sure, potentially for the codes vehicle that we're looking at. In particular, because the way that car is used, uh, would be, makes sense. Potentially also for the manager. It's not really manager. It's administrative general, uh, that would be possible as well. Little bit concerned to pay based on what you're spending, what you're going to get at forty-five thousand. But yes, we are considering it. We are looking at some of the possibilities and also putting in charging stations, looking for some grants.
That's great to hear because I know that, that is the way the world is moving and it probably would also help the township with its goal of, um, improving its sustainable Pennsylvania from bronze to silver.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, then it, it said you're looking at two more police vehicles and are those two more or two replacements?
There are two replacements.
Two replacements. So how many vehicles are in the police fleet right now anyway, already?
I believe it's thirteen. If I, it's twelve or thirteen. I'd have to, I believe it's thirteen now.
And how many police officers does the township employ?
Twenty-two.
And how many are, how many are on duty at any one time?
So.
Roughly two, five, ten.
Well, it, it, during the day, obviously we have all our administrative staff in. So you have your chief, your captain, your lieutenant. You have, uh, the, the traffic officers, depending on what his schedule's like, uh, is a separate. Then you also have the school resource officer and you have, uh, the K-nine officer, which all are designated cars.
So each of those individuals has their own car then?
Oh, and the detective. Am I missing? Is that right? And I feel like I'm missing one, but I think that's right. The captain I did mention, I think. So, and not all of those are take-home cars, but a couple of them are. And then, so I think that leaves us seven patrol cars if I did my math right. And so on patrol at any one point is, I believe, four. It's three to four, depending on the shift. Uh, we were, if we get to twenty, if we get to twenty-second police officer, it would be four per shift on all shifts. Right now there's three shifts that have four and one shift that has one.
Okay. Thank you. Are, are any of those electric vehicles?
None of them are electric vehicles at this point. Uh, we are still looking and the, the challenge with police cars is the amount of electrical power that they pull for computers, lights, all of those things. And we have not seen, we have not seen anything out there yet that says that going to electric totally makes sense. We are looking at potentially hybrid as a possibility. Uh, but again, police cars actually have two batteries in them to just maintain the electrical draw on the police car. It's also the reason why you see a police car running most of the time. If you shut that police car down, literally within fifteen minutes, you've killed the batteries, both of them.
That explains the idling. Thank you. Also, it, on leaf collection, it said there was an increase of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
There was a public request when we did the public, uh, budget process that we consider having additional leaf pickup and to, in order to add one additional time around a year, we would need to add equipment, which was what part of that was. It was, I believe, four hundred and sixty thousand. Obviously, we looked at that, you would take that and amortize it over a period of time. So, you know, it's, but it's still about, I think we still think, figured out about thirty-five thousand a year. And then, and then the addition to that was another thirty-five thousand in staff. To, we need, we would need to hire rakers. And I think we also were bringing in a driver, right? One driver.
So the cost per year of one additional leaf pickup is like seventy thousand?
Between seventy and eighty. Yeah, something like that.
Um, and the turf field is going to be replaced or proposed to be replaced for four hundred and seventy-five thousand, ten-year lifespan? I know there are a lot of, uh, recreation grant forces out there. Is the township looking at grant funding?
I don't know. We have for this particular piece. I know we look at grant funding for almost everything we can. I don't, I can't speak to say, have we looked specifically for the field?
I have not seen any for the field.
I haven't seen any either, but we do look and we look for grant funding for, I mean, we watch grants all the time for those kinds of things.
Just wondered it would fall under like the whole parks and open space thing. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my last question or suggestion is, um, about the proposed improvements at Drexel Lodge Park. I, I think it's great you're considering those. And, um, just something that might probably be a minor additional expense is to consider steps down from the parking lot, down that initial steep hill as you, as people go down to either go to the gazebo or go across the bridge. There's quite a stop, sharp drop-off there. And I actually broke my leg there last month, walking down that hill. So it's, it's something to think about. I, I've noticed that in the past when there've been like the concerts there, people are coming with their food and their chairs and right when you come off that parking lot, it is kind of steep. And it might be a simple thing to put stairs in there. Thank you.
Cindy, one clarification for you. Our status for the sustainability is actually silver.
Oh, you are silver?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, close to gold.
Okay. I know they were trying to get up there.
Yeah.
Uh, next are reports. I don't see Chief One, uh, so we'll go to George. I need nothing to add. Great. Uh, I don't see Andy Rescheck. Rich, anything else to add? There's always one.
I, I would like to just make note, uh, since this was the end of the court, I was reporting on June. We did include some projections in there that you usually don't see. Um, so I'm going to try to include, uh, quarterly projections at the end of, uh, each quarter for the, for the board to review.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Rich. Um, uh, library director, I don't see Arlene. Leisure services, I don't see Rich. Giovanna, anything to add? Thank you. And another troublemaker.
I always have something.
I know you do, Mr. Mees.
Uh, I'm going to try to be quick. Uh, uh, the last meeting or at least some point I talked to you all about the project along Route Three and, uh, the widening and particularly in front of Casey's, they were talking about coming in with bollards. Um, I want you to know we've met with them. I think they're actually going to expand, uh, and be very similar to what you see on the western part of that parking lot. There's actually a green grass area that is, uh, I think about two and a half feet wide, maybe three feet wide. And then there's a sidewalk and then the parking would be. Um, and so I've asked them to do a very similar type of thing all the way down. There's not money in the budget for the sidewalk, but there's at least, we would have the place to put in the sidewalk and actually be able to complete the sidewalk in front of that area if, as part of it. And that would actually, uh, take and have sidewalk at that point, pretty much down the, that the north side of three? No, yeah, the north side of three. And so, uh, we're, we're looking at that as a solution which would push the cars out. There would be a curb and, and would push the cars back into the parking lot that way.
So we're talking a sidewalk from like Rite Aid? Cause currently where the Casey's shopping center is, there's no sidewalk.
This would put in, this would be allow, this would allow us, it won't be put in with the project unless I can get some other funding. And I'm going back to PennDOT to get some other funding hopefully, but that's the goal. But right now, we are at least getting the space to be able to put the sidewalk in in the future.
This, this widening is, is based upon BPG's approval?
It is, correct.
And they're not putting a sidewalk in on a public street?
There was, it was, it was not part of what was originally part of the plan in that location.
I think, is there a way to go to Penn?
How is that even possible? At this point in time, with all the stuff they're doing over there on a public road? I do a little one-acre property. I, I improve everything. How is this possible? They're coming down the road and not putting a sidewalk in an area where they're, they're, they're widening the road. They have to bring it up to current standards. I think we need to have a conversation with them.
Okay. I did, but I can have another.
If they don't want to do it, then that's fine, but.
It, Mike, there's already an agreement.
What?
There's an agreement in there from, you know, from, from years ago. So, so it's, I hear what I hear Steve, Steve saying is it's not in the agreement. So we can ask them, but we can't force them.
Who signed off on allowing the widen the road and not put a sidewalk in on a road where there's, there's pedestrians? Rite Aid put it, when Rite Aid took the Chevrolet dealer out, they put a sidewalk in.
In front of the, in front of where they are, they have sidewalk. It, this is in an area that they're widening the road.
If there was a sidewalk there today, they'd have to widen it. Now there's asphalt there. That could be the sidewalk. We could strike the asphalt. So go out, let's go out and strike the asphalt now and then they got to put it back. If they want to be that technical, that's what we'll do. Call it a sidewalk. It, you have asphalt sidewalks. You have, they put an asphalt sidewalk over by the tavern for the path. They didn't put concrete in. How they got away with that? Again, I don't know, but, but they put these paths in that are asphalt. But that's, that's a sidewalk. In my opinion, that's a sidewalk. How, how can they tell us it's not? People walk on. I think we need, I, we need to, and get Mr. Spader, get Mr., Mr., um, Mr., um, John, John Ford, have him come have a conversation. I will have a conversation with them. They will be putting a sidewalk in. It's, it's sidewalk now. It's just asphalt. You can't tell me it's not. People walk across that. So now they want people to walk on the grass. So then we're having a problem with the grass going away. I mean, I wish I did every project in this town. I really do. This, this is beyond, beyond my comprehension how we. Giovanna, how's this possible? You guys were involved in this since the beginning. How do they go in and widen the road? It's supposed to be the current PennDOT standards and we don't have a sidewalk.
PennDOT doesn't require it for them.
But there's a walkway now. People are walking on pavement. They're not, there's not dirt there now. There's, they're walking on pavement, whether, whether it's, whether it's, and, and we, and we have a very good example. We have the, they've put a paved sidewalk in over the TDA, or the, the tavern, or the back of, uh, the project.
I will say the discussion, I'm sorry, let me cut you off. I will say the discussion when we had this, I was told that there is a sidewalk in front of the buildings. So therefore people could come and walk in front of the buildings and then walk back out to the street.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that comes into each side of the.
There's a sidewalk on, on three and there's a sidewalk in front of Mod Pete's and all those places too. Do people supposed to jump over the fence and walk and jump through the parking lot and walk along there and then come back out? Just, I'm, I'm. Hey, listen, I think they should come and have a conversation with us. It's very cheap to put a sidewalk in now. It's not very cheap. But we're going to put it, uh, you know, be very, very critical of everything in the future with them. Because I, 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 this predates me. So I wasn't here when that was approved, but I'll tell you right now, we've been very nice and very cooperative with them. I think the least they could do is put a sidewalk in for the residents when there's a, when there's a macadam pavement, whatever you want to call it path now, that people can walk in front of those cars. They're not walking in dirt.
Okay.
Is that a conversation with PennDOT?
I was, that's my intent is to have a conversation with PennDOT to see whether or not they would add that to the project and fund it.
Well, who's, but, but, but the, the point is, the point is, it's two thousand twenty-two, almost twenty-three. And we're trying to make the town more walkable and we're trying to make it safe for pedestrians. So we're going to tell people, okay, we're going to put a grass strip in there, but we're not going to put a sidewalk in because it wasn't figured. And yet we have a sidewalk both sides of, of the project.
Right. But this is, this is dictated by PennDOT. This, this was PennDOT's. Right, but this is, this is dictated by PennDOT. This, this was PennDOT's. This was all, when, when the project was approved and the, and the zone and the, and the widening, it was all dictated from PennDOT. So, we've got to go back to PennDOT and say, conditions have changed.
Well, it's very de minimis to put the sidewalk in when you're doing this whole.
Right, no.
It, for them to do it, it's a very minimal cost. Come back later and have us bid it out down the road. It's a very big cost, a very big inconvenience.
No, that's, I agree.
It's, it's very de minimis now.
All right, the other thing I have is just an update on the rail trail. I believe you're aware that we were looking, maybe you're aware that the consultant recommended doing a a mowing slash creating of a, like a temporary walking path, so that we could take people along that area and get feedback. Pico has come back and declined us to be able to do that because of covenants that they have with some of the residents. I am in the process of still negotiating on that to see what we can do, but at this point, the consultant has put everything on hold until we can figure that out. So, I just wanted to let you know that.
So, the state or the railroad abandons the rail trail, or the trail, or the rail, the old rail bed, and it only goes one hundred percent to Pico? Pico controls that whole trail?
I, I, my understanding is they purchased it, is that correct, or does what your understanding is as well? So, they purchased that right of way, and so, it's, it's Pico's right of way.
All the way down?
From, my understanding is they have it from two fifty-two out to Brimmar Avenue. I don't know if it goes beyond that.
And then, did it ever go north of two fifty-two, like where BPG and everything is now, at one point?
I, I don't know that, George, you may know that.
Is that winding way, George? Is that the old rail?
So, that's where the old rail guard used to be, over, over on that side where, where BPG is now. So, that's not owned by Pico. That was a separate parcel. What Pico did was purchase the, the railroad bed back in the nineteen sixties, and, and they purchased it lock, stock, and barrel. So, even on the, even on the county parcels, it's identified as a parcel. It's a long, narrow parcel, just enough room for the railroad.
So, then that makes it very difficult that they have all these covenants and restrictions for us to put a trail in.
That's correct.
I guess Mr. Custer's got his work cut out for him, negotiation skills.
Anything further, Mr. Nice?
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, going to item, agenda item ten point one. Can I get a motion to consider approving the request to transfer twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars from the general fund to the capital fund? This money represents money that was budgeted or committed in two, in twenty twenty-two for line painting and road maintenance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Budget adjustment, eleven point one to eleven point three, I'm gonna take as one motion. So, can I have a motion to approve the items as advertised in eleven point one through eleven point three?
So, move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Payments, I'll do the same for items twelve point one to twelve point five. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the approval for payments as listed on the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And can I get a motion to approve twelve point six payment to Lori DeFabio for eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars as, as payment in full for past court reporting services?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll make the motion since I reviewed in item thirteen point one, the approval of bills on check register A dated August eighth totaling four hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-three cents. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. I'd like to make the motion since I've reviewed the bills on the EFP register dated August eighth, twenty twenty-two totaling one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Can I get a second?
Second.
All, all.
You're good.
Wait, what do I do? I forget. All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Sorry. Motion carries. Can I have a motion, please, for fourteen point one, consider approving the pension plan MMO, minimum municipal obligation payment for twenty twenty-three and authorizing the township manager to sign for uniform and non-uniform employees totaling two hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and a hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and nine respectively.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I get a motion for fourteen point two, consider approving, awarding the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three de-icing salt contract on behalf of ten Delaware County municipalities to Riverside Construction Materials who had the lowest responsible bid of seventy-five dollars per ton. This award is subject to the acceptance of the other municipalities of their share of the contract obligation.
So move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are tabling fourteen point three until we have a full board. Do I need to have a motion for that, or that's okay?
No, we already passed that.
You already did.
Fine, fourteen, fourteen point four. Can I get a motion for, to approve fourteen point four considering awarding the Echo Valley Culvert Improvement Contract to JMC Contractors as the lowest responsible bidder with a bid totaling three hundred and sixty-two dollars and three hundred and fifty-five dollars and one cent as recommended by the township engineer?
So, move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did we discuss tabling fourteen point five? The approval of the bid from Trinity Subsurface Utility Location for the Northwood Drainage Project, which has potentially ninety-six utility comp, conflicts at a cost of fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
You had it, yeah.
Like to make a, a motion to table that, so we can look at some other options for this item. So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to table fourteen point five. Can I get a motion for fourteen point six, discussion and possible action regarding the proposal from CMC Engineering to perform engineering work for the eighteen sixty Bartram Covered Bridge Project Structural Steel red renovation project. Mr. Nice, does this need an explanation?
So, I believe last, last year, two, two years ago now?
Two meetings.
Oh, two meetings ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometime, sometime in the past. We had shared with you that we wanted to go out and work with this group to start looking at moving forward with the renovations that needed to be done at the Bartram Bridge. If you'll recall, you budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and so did Willistown, so you have about two hundred and fifty thousand. In addition to that, we have a grant to do some work out there that is a little, the grant's a little more, what would you call it? I'm trying to think of the word. It's a little less structural, a little more.
For the sidewalk? Some of the aesthetics of the.
The aesthetics of the bridge.
Were part, were part of the structural rehabilitation, such as the clapboards on the side, they're, they're the red parts, or the the boards that go along the base of the bridge itself.
So, so we have two, basically two projects going on. Part of its grant, we're using what we're doing on the structural side to offset our match on the grant to, for this project.
So, CMC Engineering, the, the company that sent the proposal in, were the ones who two or three years ago had done the evaluation, the structural evaluation of the bridge. That was the basis upon which we were able to budget for the project. And the Bartram Bridge Joint Commission did recommend that we consider having them draw up the, the specifications for the work to be done, and then inspect the work as it was being done.
And what, how much is the proposal? Doesn't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, there, so there's fees, and then there's fee schedules for, for additional work that would wind up being done.
So, so what's the specific proposal that, that we're looking to take action on? What's, what are the numbers?
So, you're, you're looking at twenty, thirty-eight thousand, no, thirty-nine thousand three hundred for set fees, and then it says if there's monthly expenses plus outstanding invoices, I'm looking at the wrong thing there. What, I don't know, George, what are the other fees?
Well, and then it's a fee schedule for, for other expenses that would be built. That is correct.
Okay.
And, and understand, it'll be dependent upon Willistown also agreeing to accept it. So, they're, they're gonna be presenting at, at their meeting, which is, I think, next week.
Where are we getting the funding? Is, did you say part of it is a grant, or?
No, this is money, this, I believe, is the money you already set aside as part of the one twenty-five.
Okay, so we already have this money of, you know.
You budgeted it this year.
Okay, so are you looking for us to?
Approve using CMC.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She carries. Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Discussion and possible action regarding Marple Township paving project at Springton Point Drive.
So, as I've talked with most of you individually, since we had something come up that we did not know about, I wanted to kind of get you started, but I'm gonna give you a quick overview, just so that everybody's on the same page. Marple Township went out for a bid to do their project of doing some repaving, and one of those was Springton Point Drive. For those who are not familiar, Springton Point Drive is one of those roads in the township that on, we have a part of the road and Marple has a part of the road. There's, I, I think at least three or four of those that I know of. Some are split right down the middle of the road, it's real easy. This one happens to be one that if you go into Springton Point, which is on, off of Gradyville Road, we probably have the larger portion, about two-thirds, and then there's a third of the development that's actually in Marple. The only way in and out of that development happens to be over Springton Point Drive, which comes in and out of Newtown Township. Marple went out and did a road program. We did not realize it, but they went out and did a road program, and Springton Point Drive was one of the roads that they were doing a basic mill and overlay of just the wearing course, which is going down about an inch and a half. They came, the contractor got out there, and he started milling, or say he, the company started milling, he or she. And they got a long, they went down and were going down Springton Point Drive, however, they were going down in the Newtown portion. And they did about two-thirds of the Newtown portion of the road with a short forty-foot section that they supposedly went around a car that was parked on the side of the road and continued on before they realized that they were milling in the wrong spot. So, we've been in conversation with Marple Township. We've been in conversation with the contractor. We thought what would be great would be if the contractor would agree to use their pricing and actually do the whole neighborhood. They were not willing to do that, because we also have issues of, on Sleepy Hollow Road, as well as Frog Hollow Road that are actually in worse shape than Springton Point Drive. So, we went back and forth. We've also worked with Marple and saying, what, what's their proposal in fixing this? The contractors agreed to put asphalt down along that ten-foot swatch that's about the two-thirds of our portion of, of Springton Point Drive, and that's all they've agreed to. Marple has said that since it was their contractor and their project, they would actually pave coat, mill and pave curb to curb in that section. However, it leaves forty feet that wasn't milled at this point, and that would not be done, and nor would the section between that, that takes us into Marple as portion of the project. So, you would have brand new in Marple's portion, you would have a section that was the old section. Then you would have the new section that Marple did, another old section, it's about forty feet wide, then you would have another new section. Then you would have the area that is what is basically Sleepy Hollow Road's intersection that was probably done six or seven years ago, I think, to fix a problem there. And then, because it's, it's newer than Sleepy Hollow Road, and then you have the section that we did in twenty twenty for the entrance of it. So, you would have a road that's, I don't even think it's, it, it's a mess. So, what I would like to do, if, with, if the board is okay, I'd like to go back to Marple and offer that the township would pay basically for Springton Point Drive to be done at least from where they started the milling at that spot up until Marple's section of where they did it, if that can be worked out. If not, I would like to at least get them to do the forty-foot section that got skipped so that we at least reduce the number of patchwork quilt looking things in that neighborhood.
Do you need, do you need agreement, or do you need a motion, Steve, to, 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 to go back to Marple? You, you just looking for us to, to give you a direction, or you're looking for official action?
Well, do you know what the rate is?
Uh, we know the rate of the contractor is eight dollars and twenty-five. I think it's eight dollars.
It was a, it was a million cost that it was a.
Oh, is it, is it double cost?
I think if, if George can dig up the actual rates, you can approve us to go and finish that road at those bid. Those rates were already bid out by Marple, so this would be like a reimbursement agreement with Marple under those publicly bid numbers. So, as long, if you give us a motion to authorize Stephen to enter into a reimbursement agreement to finish that paving at these known rates, we don't have to come back to you.
I'll make that motion to direct Steve to go to Marple to propose doing the road at the bid, bid rate that, that was given to, to Marple.
And those rates were two dollars and forty-two cents for milling and seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for wearing course.
That's square yard?
That is correct.
Or square yard? So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Fourteen point eight, consider exercising the first of four options to extend the lease dated September twenty-eight, nineteen eighty-seven with the municipal authority for the property of Bishop Hollow Road, that includes land used by Public Works and the Little League for additional ten years. Mr. Nice, or Rich?
Uh, this is just.
This is the lease?
Yeah, this is the, the property where the Nell, Newtown Edge, my Little League is. There's, there's basically three big parcels from Ellis Road, Ellis Avenue here, where the township building is adjacent to. And then there's right next door where the Nell occupies and has the indoor practice facility. And then there's another huge, similar-sized partial that is adjacent to that and in between that and the campus road office park. And so, the township got back in the eighties for a, a donation or a dollar, that far property where Nell has its fields. The middle property where the indoor practice facility sits was purchased in the mid-eighties by the municipal authority. And that's on a long-term lease with the township. You know, for a dollar. And it was, I think it was a thirty-five-year initial term, and then it was extendable in four ten-year increments by the township. So, that, the, the initial thirty-five years is up in September, it's September twenty-four, September twenty-fifth. So, for us to be able to extend the lease for another ten years and then have three more options to do that, you have to actually take formal action to extend the lease.
And this lease is in this, it's the same terms and conditions?
And it's, and it's the most simple of simple leases. It's like a one-page document that says township leases from the municipal authority, this ground.
Okay, so, and it's a ten-year lease, and it's got options in this ten-year lease then?
It was, it was a thirty-five-year initial lease that expires in September, and then.
This is the first.
The first of four ten-year.
Okay. And can I get a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and Tina, just to add, there was some discussion about how long this lease should be, and in my opinion, when.
This is, this is different. This is, this is not, this is not the, this is not a lease with the Little League. This is this is not, this is not the, this is not a lease with the Little League. This is a lease with the municipal authority and the township. So there's a, there's a piece of property. We're taking this action first because we, it's kind of hard to make a lease with the municipal, with the Little League if we don't have.
Okay, understood. Then 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 we're going to talk about that next. Yep, yep, yep.
So we, this is to gain, this is to remain, to have the control to sublease this to now.
That's correct.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I believe part of the Public Works Building is even on it, so it's.
You better keep that clean, George, then.
Uh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, fourteen point nine, I think, uh, it's discussion with possible decision about street art crosswalk painting. I think we've all decided we're gonna.
If if you want to see real quick, the couple paintings that we saw as a crosswalk, this is what the road looked like initially uh in media. If you go to the next one, uh, George didn't fly up in the sky when he took his picture, but you can see that it wears off. And that's less or is about a year somewhere in there. Uh, so you can see it wears off pretty quickly. However, that design, if you look, if you go back to that, yeah, there we go. As you can see, it's a fairly simple design.
Yep.
You know, the design that we saw was a little bit more intricate and a lot more detail. Uh, this is about, I think we counted about seven different colors. It's pretty simple. Uh, but even that, as you can see, we're, it would require a fair amount of maintenance.
And we're just basically not ready.
Yes.
Right now in in the traffic calming.
And then the final one here, I was just going to quickly show you, is that this is another possible way to do that without necessarily having a pattern. But using the cross, using the X outs and then potentially doing a little bit of color if you wanted to, if at some point. And so that you can see that. And this this they've done, and it seems to be holding up pretty well. They've done that at a couple of different corners. Okay?
Okay, uh, next item, all anyone have old business? Uh, final item, that's number fifteen, sixteen point one, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-two to twenty-eight Sustainable Newtown Township Green Business Program. Ed?
Yes, um, resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight Sustainable Newtown Township Green Business Program. Whereas Newtown Township's mission statement is to be the preeminent township dedicated to public service with integrity and achieved by encouraging communications and protecting resources. And sustainability focuses on protecting resources. Ed, whereas township recognizes to be preeminent. Means the township should not only strive towards excellence and maintaining excellence, but desires to be an organization that other municipalities, organizations. And businesses will follow. And whereas Newtown Township passed resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen on April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, thereby endorsing Newtown Township participation in the sustainability. Um, Pennsylvania Community Essential Certificate Program. Whereas in the sustainable, sustainable Pennsylvania Community Essential Certificate Program, item two twenty-four E. Recommends that a program is in place to encourage businesses to be aware of innovative, sustainable, sustainable business approaches and to recognize achievement. Whereas Newtown Township Environmental Advisory Commission has recommended a sustainable Newtown Township Green Business Program to help achieve Newtown Township's sustainability goals. Whereas the Board of Supervisors wished to partner with the Environmental Advisory Committee to manage the Newtown Township Green Business. Program through promotion, business outreach, education, and certificate of program participants. Whereas Newtown Township Green Business Program will reward and recognize local businesses in reference in leveraging sustainable business practices and protecting the township's finite resources, including, but not limited to. Eliminating or reducing single-use plastic, reducing consumption of energy and water, increased recycling efforts, using recycled or locally sourced products and and other environmentally friendly best practices. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors establishes the Newtown, the Sustainable Newtown Township Green Business Program, and will collaborate with the Environmental Advisory Council and others. As needed to attain the program's objectives resolved this eighth day of August, two thousand twenty-two, and that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, is there any board comment? No public comment. Uh, items for next agenda. When is our next meeting? Oh, we're not going to see each other for a whole month? Okay, so we are adjourned till September twelfth. Enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.